Good evening, I'm Joe Capello. I'm the Anti-Bullying Coordinator for the Nutley School District. Twice a year I have to report to the Board, our biannual report in the fall. This evening I have to do it from last year, from January to June.
I've got you.
Thank you, Mr. Lassner. Just to go quickly over what is the statutory definition of what is harassment, intimidation, bullying according to Department of Education. It could be a single incident or a series of incidents through any gesture of written, verbal, physical, electronic communication. Has to be motivated by actual or perceived characteristic. Mr. Lassner, thank you. Take place on school property, school function, school bus, all school grounds. Disrupt the student's education with an orderly operation at the school or the rights of the student. Has to have some type of impact on the student, physical, emotional harm, or fear of putting them in physical, emotional harm, creates hostile educational environment, insulting or demeaning. Here are the protected characteristics under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. In addition to this, as obvious as the bottom right-hand corner, do we also have any other distinguishing characteristic? Any other distinguishing characteristic? Could be anything that ever skip here. Our statistics for from last June, from last January, excuse me, to this past June. Total number of hit cases that were investigated were 58. I'm a member of the Anti-Bullying Coordinator Association. Throughout the school year, and now this is just some of the stuff that we do, just to highlight. PA announcements throughout each school, positive accomplishments, guidance newsletter, our affirmative action training this year focused on awareness of protected characteristics as well as transgender youth. We're maintaining an HIB link. Also involved, as well as many of the Anti-Bullying Specialists are involved in the Affirmative Action Committee. Things that we do for students individually, depending upon an investigation, if it was considered HIV or code of conduct, or sometimes it may be considered a non-HIV event. Sometimes we do implement some discipline, there are support services through guidance, special services. Sometimes we have special assignments. These are some of the assignments that we've done throughout the year. Sometimes ask the affirmative action committee to get involved with assignments. Some miscellaneous things, as you can see, parent conferences, locker seat change, try to be very creative. The most important, when there's an investigation, what are similar remedial measures, not just for a victim, to assist the victim, but also to assist the person who was involved in those actions. Classroom level, the elementary school, and the New Jersey Child and Soul Prevention Program. We used to do that in January. We also have a parent workshop in January. At the elementary level, a character education program through the Anti-Bullying Specialists, which also serve as the guidance counselors. At John Walker Middle School, we had advisory period throughout the year. This year, though, instead of having one a month, we've increased it to two a month, which should focus on academic, social, and emotional development at the middle school. The high school level, all the levels, any classroom lessons that is infused into the curriculum, any teachable moment. A lot of programs are through clubs, assemblies, fundraisers, any theme days or spirit weeks. Community level, we have different workshops from January to June. We have the Community Health and Mentoring Program, try to connect a high school mentor to either elementary level or even to some high school students. We have the Shonlet Seniors, which is more of a character education program, students assisting seniors during, including weather. Many of our programs are sponsored by the Nutley Municipal Lives Committee, as well as the Life Department also is involved in community service projects. Just wanted to give a little snapshot of what we did this year for the week of respect. We had a blue shirt day, which is for stop-out bullying. It's World Prevention, World Bullying Prevention Day. Once again, PA announcements, media specialists, we put up displays at the elementary level. There were two books that were read through from K to six. At the middle school, we had advisory lesson, we had banners and pens put up. You could see them as you walk into the building. At the high school, different lessons, classroom lessons, and club-led activities. Things I'm going to be looking forward to. Report which I submitted to the State, which was submitted in July. We are awaiting the results of the school self-assessment, which should be posted soon by the Department of Education. Those grades will be posted on the district's homepage and the school's website, and will also be part of a link, an HIB link. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. The other piece, he doesn't touch on the presentations or the work that the teachers and staff do every day for these students, just our character education partners, which we plan, but just regular contact that we have to try to reinforce good decision-making. So, are there any questions from Mr. Capello?
Thank you.
Every year required to make public presentations, the boarding on student performance. I know lots of boarders still, lots of administrators just don't really care if they release. The secondary Park data, as I've been sharing, we had our Parent Academy on that data last week, the day after this release. As of this morning, they released the elementary data. So, we have our elementary data as well. The presentation tonight, we have reviews, information that was presented at Parent Academy last week, and previews, information that will be presented tomorrow at our Parent Academy, seven o'clock at the high school, room 11. Starting the presentation just again because Park is one means of measuring our student performance and how the district is doing, but this is our overall goal. Students are aware of what we're doing. Park has raised a lot of questions, a lot of conversation, and we want to make sure that we stay focused on this piece. I also use this slide because the very first word, challenge, this has been a great challenge, both in just making sure we can actually use the Park assessment appropriately, assess our students' computers, it was the first time for that. First-time new test, the state, as well as other states giving similar assessments so that we can measure our students' performance, not just against other students in New Jersey, but against other students from the consortium. Again, this idea that we want to try and meet all five of these at all times. If our work is not directed toward these five, then we know we have to stop and take stock of what we're doing and make sure we're making better decisions. So, when it came to Park, I've been posting on this idea that the state of New Jersey has been communicating, which is the honesty gap. This idea that state assessments from state to state were not accurately telling folks whether students were prepared for college and careers. And the way they did that is they were actually assessing the data from each state, so New Jersey's ASK and our HESPA, and determining, okay, if you guys say this is what you need to know and be able to do for high school graduation, it should by definition then prepare you for college and career. They compared that data with the amount of data Clearinghouse is able to provide, and the number of students who, number one, are accepted to and actually attended to a four-year school, and a percentage of those students who have to partake in remedial classes, by definition then not really prepared for entry-level work at the high school level. And what they were finding was there was a huge discrepancy between the number of students these tests at each state level were saying, the students were saying, they were prepared for college and career, and the number of students that were actually demonstrating preparedness once they got to college and worked for us. So, looking at our HESPA, the state of New Jersey determined that there's not an appropriately rigorous assessment and looked for something different. What it found during the Park Consortium, again, Park, one of the number of assessments based off the Common Core. And just as a look, the training sessions that I did last Tuesday and tomorrow, I really built the parents to understand the new individual student reports that are coming out because a lot has changed. We've got, we spent decades getting used to a system, and overnight now we're moving to a new system. Under the old, we had three levels of performance, partially proficient, which was not meeting grade level expectations, proficient, which is meeting grade level expectations, and advanced proficient, which is exceeding grade level expectations. Under Park, there are now five levels of performance. Levels one through five, not meeting, partially meeting, approaching, meeting, and exceeding. And so, where under the ASK system, two of the three levels denoted proficiency, in the Park system, two of five levels actually denote proficiency. So, whether you're red, orange, or yellow, you are not where Park is saying you should be as a grade level student. That's important to note because the state released its data about two weeks ago. Each state in the Park Consortium is able to allow to release its data as it chooses. Not all the states have released their full data yet, but we do know how the consortium as a whole has done. As you can see, this is state results across the state of New Jersey. From grades three through 11 in English Language Arts, every student grade three through 11 took an English Language Assessment and was offered the opportunity to take an English Language Arts Assessment. Levels four and five are combined in the last column on the right, because four and five together are those students who, based on the Park's definition, were proficient grade level standard. So, as you can see, if we take grade three, the 39% were meeting expectations, and the 5% of students who were exceeding expectations, 44% of the students in third grade were found by the Park to be grade level proficient, which is a huge difference from what we had found statewide on our ASK three, that assessment. When the vast majority of the students were proficient here, fewer than one of every two students has demonstrated proficiency. You can see the numbers as they go from very few levels. This was released about two weeks ago. The state then, following this, released the high school secondary data, which I'll talk about in a second. But before I do that, I want to give you a glimpse of the math performance. Numbers are generally lower in math and math and their work in English Language Arts across the state. And again, as you can see, the last column is your proficient students, both meeting and exceeding expectations. This is across the entire state. So, as soon as this data was released, I tried to get it up on our website, but before I even could, I was receiving phone calls from all sorts of stakeholders wanting to know what our scores were, and reminding that we hadn't received them yet. It's important to note that different level of proficiency, so nothing may have changed at all, we have the same kids, they haven't gotten worse, we're saying, but we're assessing them using a different standard. So, what's important for us as a district is not truly how many of our kids are proficient, but how we're performing against everyone else, because that's a word we're, that we actually have some perspective on. We know where we've been year after year over the past eight, 10 years when it comes to how our students perform against other New Jersey students. So, if everyone has gone from 80, 90% passing to 40 to 50% passing at best, everyone's moved, it's that there's a new bar. But where are we in comparison to everybody else achieving that new bar? That's what we're really focusing on. Have we maintained compared to others? Have we fallen behind compared to others in this new assessment? Or have we strummed ahead? As we get this Park data in, we shared just with administrators, we will be breaking it down. We have been told that one of the benefits of new Park assessment, unlike the ASK and the HESPA, we will actually receive individual information on each student. What I mean by that is what questions, bless you, they did well on, what questions they struggled on, not just types of questions, but actual student work to see how our kids did, so that while they're still with us this year, we can use this data from last year to inform instruction, to make sure that we're closing gaps as opposed to continuing. Our English Language Arts, I get lots of numbers, but I will show you, as I always do, in color, a couple key pieces. The last column is still the state from the other table. The column previous to that is our performance exceeding level four or five. So, if you take our 53% in grade three who were meeting expectations, and 3% who were exceeding grade level expectations, were 56%. To try and give you some perspective, again, we've done work with our advanced placement. We don't look to see massive jumps in performance in a large group of students in one year. But this will be up on the website, feel free, so I know people trying to write numbers down. It'll be up, you get all the numbers, you can download them. We've had four consecutive years of increased advanced placement performance, and that's what we're looking for, consistent growth, not some massive 50-point swing, but progressive growth in the right direction. Further to give you perspective, up until this year, these scores, we were, Mr. Williams' phrase, but also from our strategic planning initiative, middle of the middle or worse. What that means is if you look at scores like this, you should see numbers that parallel or are lower than the state numbers. So, if I look at first, third grade, I would expect to see, based on our previous scores, something in the 40, 44 to low 40 percentile, because we were either at or below where the state was. And what I'm looking at is 56%. Okay? So, while we're not happy with the level of proficiency that's denoted by that 56%, we've shown significant growth at that grade level, because in the past we would have been 42, 43, based on 10 years of data. If you look at grade four, we're above, grade five, we're above, grade six, we're above, grade seven, we're above, grade eight, we're above. So, all the way through our elementary program, where we were only last year on ASK and HESPA, going back 10 years, at the middle or below the middle, we're significantly above the middle in our performance. If you look at our high school scores, again, dip in 10th grade, but if you look at ninth and 11th as well, statistically well over where the state is performing. Okay? This is a change for us. Is it the level of proficiency that we want to see? I don't think most districts are going to say that Park has shown them a level of proficiency across their entire population, that they're content with. But again, we're looking to see where we are against everyone else because they all took the same assessment. The state has assigned to teachers and to students a growth score. The way they can get that growth score is by taking like students based on previous performance and measuring their performance on teacher assessments. This is exactly what the state has been talking about when it says it wants to see growth. It wants to see you take students and move their performance. So, in the past, if we've been performing at or below, I think you can see through that across the board, we're at or at most places, we're at or above when it comes along with that. As far as math, some interesting numbers for us. Fourth grade, we were just at, that's where we expect to see ourselves, based on previous data. If you look at seventh grade and eighth grade, that is where we've been performing significantly lower. If you look at every other grade, for the most part, the district is outperforming the state numbers. This is a significant change for our population. Again, is it where we want to end up? No. But moving every single year, what we're looking for is that gradual increase in numbers. These numbers are yet to be disaggregated as far as population, students with disabilities, English proficiency, socioeconomic status, and the rest. We are waiting for those reports to come in. But we're told that we're going to be, for the first time, actually given all the data in electronic format, so that we can put that data into our performance management system, Performance Matters, and put it side by side with our internal data, to see exactly what our data is telling us compared to this. This is one piece of student performance data. It's obviously a significant one, because we can compare ourselves against people beyond. I had many conversations with people at the elementary level, I'm sorry, at high school level last Tuesday about, we're preparing kids not just for content, but for competition. If you're applying to a college/university, you're competing for slots. You're applying to a company for a job, you're competing for slots. So, we always want to know, how are our students preparing versus other students, against whom they're going to have to compete? And the good news here is that in the past, our overall numbers, as I said, have been at best about where the state average is, if not above. As you can see from these two tables, at least in this first year, as the content has changed, the format has changed, the interface has changed, and our scores have changed for the better. I will be presenting information, sorry, let me talk real quick. At the high school level, again, they were separate. I pulled them out only because, not for English Language Arts, but for some of our math scores. We had to include middle school students, because we have middle school students taking Algebra I, and middle school students taking Geometry. So, we have a report on our high school and a report on the districts. Overall, especially what's really interesting is if you look at our middle school students at the highest levels, when it came to geometry, we were 100% proficient. Every single student in those classes that were highlighted for accelerated math was at minimum proficient on the Park assessment, and we were in the 90s when it came to our Algebra I students from middle school. So, again, as we've been accelerating this learning, the kids are responding. We'll be sharing tables like this, this was already shared last Tuesday. We have tables like this, but just to give an idea, 100% stacked columns showing the performance of our students in each column, so level one, two, three, four, and the blue up top is five, to give you a perspective on how the different populations stacked up. Again, remember, the Park Consortium, you've got about 70,000 scores in there versus NHS where you've got 200. But if you look at the different levels, it starts to show you how the populations have broken down. You can see, as I mentioned, the middle school scores when it comes to Algebra I versus the district's scores as a whole, and then the state. And what you want to see, obviously, we want to see more of the top two colors than the other columns. In the past, we're used to seeing less. We've done this for each, the other piece that I've done is I've broken out just your four plus. So, these are your students that have met or exceeded expectations. And as you can see, the Park Consortium on the left, that's across the entire consortium. You have the state of New Jersey, which in this case outperformed the Park Consortium as a whole. Then you have our district, which outperformed the state, and obviously the middle school, as I mentioned, too, is highly successful on this assessment, and then the rest of the high school. Okay? This was presented last Tuesday. I don't want to jump in on this presentation, it was meant just to be on general members. I know a lot of people are in plane to come tomorrow. I did not want to pre-release that data. I have shared it with the principals as well as our coordinators. We restarted breaking down different pieces that we've seen, but based on this, what I can tell you is that, as you saw from the tables, Language Arts across the board, we showed a definite increase in our performance in math, case six, a massive increase. Still need to work on our middle high school. Are there questions from you? The rest of this presentation is for the elementary. Will be available seven o'clock tomorrow, and it's just like the last week's high school and secondary, we will post it on the website, the presentation, as well as the video of the actual meeting, has some related back and forth with the parents and community. Mr. Lee, floor George.
I'm George Chris, and we're the Technology Supervisor of Career Technical Education. We're going to review the program review for the CTE department. I hope to thank this Solomon for our new department program. Basically, description of the program, fiber cycle, CTE four, holds our current program description, review of surveys, as well as recommendations, and five-year plan. Starting year four program review, we'll be doing a curriculum rewrite starting in next month, actually, and it'll be a five-year ongoing program review. Basically, we went through a description of the program, surveys of staff, current students, alumni, as well as staff, to provide input into the program review. As I said, we'll talk about the existing program review, existing program that's in the middle school and in the high school, talk about changes in resources, what we request, need, for suggestions, recommendations moving forward, and additional program recommendations. So, currently in seventh through 12, Career Technical Education offers a hands-on, career-focused education curriculum, communication, technical skills, introduction to work skills, 21st century skills, exposure to a variety of different areas. Industrial arts, we're going to get into a little bit industrial arts, Cisco network, computer applications, financial literacy, et cetera. So, it's the whole idea of learning through a hands-on approach, through solving real-world And preparing students for financial independence. Currently, middle school, we've got two full-time teachers here in the middle school, two programs, seventh and eighth grade, both broken up as half-year courses. Grade seven, we've got keyboarding and word processing for half the year, the other half the year is introduction to technology, which is the design process, introduction to skills in pre-engineering, et cetera. Grade eight is organ computer applications, Microsoft Office is introduced, and then Principles and Technology is also the design process, continued from seventh grade, more in-depth design process and engineering. If you've been to our district art show, and you've seen Mr. Markovitz and the kids doing the CO2 cars and the Marvel ping-pong roller coasters, that's the program currently. At the high school, we've got 11 full-time staff. The department consists of TV production with Mr. Kelly, digital photography, networking, Cisco Academy with Mr. Campbell, Mr. Torito with all of the industrial arts, woodworking, metal, computerated design, culinary with Mr. Golaro and Mr. Huggins. We have three courses that qualify for Perkins Plan, there's three two-level courses. TV production with Mr. Kelly, the students you see everywhere filming everything that goes on in the district at board meetings. Culinary arts program, Mr. Huggins and Mr. Golaro's, three levels, advanced culinary, which is hospitality management. This group, the students cater the Nutley Chamber of Commerce luncheon at the Starlight Dance Bar, the entire Nutley Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Campbell's, Campbell's Cisco Certified at the end of the program. Also falling under this is the practical arts graduation requirement, so there's practical arts, and then digital photography falls under line arts, still, still falls under CTE. We still offer a industrial arts program. There are not many districts in the state that offer that, and we're proud to say that we do. And Mr. Torito, that's wood, metal, electrical, practical electricity, computerized design, et cetera. And then financial literacy and computer applications are mandated by the state, so those are state requirements that students have to be, courses that students have to take and apply. You can go to our website, or here's just a list of all the other courses. The business, sports, entertainment, marketing, business law, international business practice with Mr. P. C. Tini, are all additional courses that we currently offer. So, as I mentioned before, we sent out four different surveys. One to staff, talking about the curriculum and the courses. The other, we sent to students grades seven through 12. We sent it out to alumni, we had 126 alumni responses, which was pretty impressive, and current students, 620 students responded to the surveys. And we had 25 parents respond to the survey that we sent out. And just to summarize, I don't want to all over the survey questions, but the staff is curriculum being implemented. Just from the staff surveys, we need to do an update and revision of the curriculum. It's new 21st century career readiness standards that are set forth by the state. I really feel that CTE is, the courses that they're teaching are both a combination of content and skill-based courses. We asked the students and alumni a number of questions, one, you know, what are they doing currently, but questions about what courses should, would you have liked to have seen offered in the Career Technical Education program? And the other questions we have were, and one that were relevant, is would you have liked to have seen courses be half-year courses, to allow for more exposure? For the alumni, that's, almost 74% of students are alumni, think that half-year courses, would like to have had half-year courses. From the alumni, also, we asked some of the courses that they would have liked to have seen being offered, graphic design, animation, coding and programming, business marketing, business psychology were some of the big courses that they thought, they would have liked to have offered at the high school. Of our current students, would they like to see the CTE, they liked the course to be half-year, 64% said they would. They're going to be pursuing a career related to career technical education, 30% said yes, 30% said no, some of those are still in the middle school. Of the current students, what they would like to be offered, graphic design, animation, and coding, and seeing the recommendations, which of course, they would like to offer to students. This is where we're going now, in regards to 21st century jobs, so. Parent responses, you can see animation, robotics as well. We just started a robotics club in the high school this year. So, Mr. Fain, Mr. Sisita, met with some folks, Mr. Casner and Mr. Simone are So Mr. Fain, Mr. Sisita, met with some folks from Mr. Casner and Mr. Simone, and Miss Yena Slipp are now starting the, started the robotics program at the high school, so we're excited about that. And from the parents, two questions that really stick out, or, you know, half-year courses, again, there's this trend of offering half-year courses, a lot more exposure to different things. And would they find more important, child taking an AP class or an elective class that interests them? And seventy-two percent of the parents surveyed, out of the twenty-five of them, said they would like to have their students take an elective. So recommendations. Recommendations are, we will take this year to review half-year courses and taking a level one, a number of different level one courses for not the upcoming sixteen, seventeen school year, but seventeen, eighteen school year to offer various courses. To offer graphic design course, to offer computer animation, coding and application development course. Ms. McDonald, who teaches our web design, fundamentals of web design now, currently touches upon a number of application development. She's starting to work with that with some of the students already. Would also like to offer a full computer science program, level one, two, and an AP level course as well. This would be hopefully for seventeen, eighteen. There are so many districts that are currently offering these types of courses. And, you know, from our conversations with other districts in the state, this is, this is what, these are the types of programs that we're offering. Also like to offer a business entrepreneurship course, business psychology, additional business marketing. Change the digital photography too, to focus more on some of the business aspects of digital photography, copyright, logo, et cetera. Some of the recommendations were to also focus on the financial literacy courses for the upper grade students in the high school, as if there are, most of them have, because right now, a lot of the students who are freshmen, are working in financial literacy courses. Regulations from the teacher for moving to the higher level courses, because the students have jobs, have some money, so it is a little bit more relevant, a little bit more. Also, work with the guidance department on the course catalog, work on prerequisite courses for a number of different courses of some of our classes, as well as continue to work with Nutley Chamber of Commerce and other local businesses, with the business and finance courses, and increase our CTE courses throughout the year. For the middle school, the idea for the middle school is to introduce the students to a number of different things that they will be taking in the high school. Really start working with Google Apps for Education in the middle school. So the new courses in the, in the middle school would talk about digital tools and programming, web etiquette, so digital tools and programming, web etiquette used with Google Apps for Education, student presentation and working together, really learning Google Apps for Education, so we'll get to the high school, they're well-prepared. The design and technology course will be essentially the focus from target course, focusing on the design process, engineering for students, computerized design. Then eighth grade, what we'd like to do is continue with the collaborative work, focusing on invention and innovation, introduce students to different products, solving problems, working together to find a problem, use, working also with Lego robotics, introduce students to robotics, problem-solving, programming with the Lego mindstorms. You haven't seen it, a grade, we just got one for my eight-year-old son, who built Legos and now he's programming and controlling it on his iPad, and he's just praising the doll of bugs, the robot. And then digital production, 3D modeling. The whole idea behind this class, this would be a half-year class as well, students will be able to work using digital photography, video production, and 3D modeling, where at the end of the program, they will have to create a stop-motion movie. They'll have to storyboard its elements of TV production, its elements of digital photography. So introducing them to all these different skills and programs that are currently offered in the high school, all while tying in 3D modeling, using MakerBot 3D printers to design sets and figures and different things for their, for their movie. Some of the recommendations moving forward. Revise the curriculum faced upon the 21st century life and careers standards and the career readiness practices. We have already started, departments, already started working together and collaborating and getting prepared for next month, while we start writing curriculum and push through January. And then revising common assessments, looking at different skills, and revising curriculum as needed. Other resources, we would like to have a TV studio renovation for Mr. Kelly. That's a TV student smile. Lego robotics kits, additional 3D printers for the middle school. We designed some of the middle school classrooms, that they have modular seating and furnitures that they can work collaboratively, they can move around, they can work wherever they need to in this unique learning environment, as well as just some additional technology and equipment, digital cameras, et cetera. Additional recommendations from the staffing perspective, hired additional administrator to support the CTE department. Increased staffing in the high school by two full-time staff for computer, someone to teach the computer science program, three levels, as well as for graphic design and animation courses, as well as additional stipend positions for culinary arts teachers who go above and beyond for the actual catering events and everything that they do outside of that. This is the picture of the five-year plan. Spoke about this, didn't go into much detail, but the idea is to redo, do the curriculum now for this school year, implement the curriculum for the next school year, and then convert, possibly convert classes to half-year, depending upon the specific classes in the, in the high school, and then move a lot of everything in seventeen, eighteen. And purchase technology. Thank you. Any questions? Floor first.
Are we planning to implement keyboarding in the elementary level, since we're planning to remove it from seventh and eighth grade?
Currently, in the elementary school, in the elementary schools, keyboarding is done, we've been purchasing promo cards for elementary schools. So increased use of technology in the elementary schools. Also, it's being taught in the library media, in courses in the library media, so there is, there is keyboarding. More use of keyboarding, typing is where we're pushing keyboarding through those ways as opposed to actual keyboarding. Who's that?
My question was similar, but I noticed you were removing it from the middle school and incorporating it into what course, what new what courses?
It will be incorporated into the invention and innovation course in eighth grade, as well as the design tool, the design course in seventh grade. Okay, any questions? Thank you. Back, everybody.
Our two competitions, Jurassic Contest, Voice of Democracy for high school students in eighth, twelfth, and six, twelve. I just wanted to announce that Julian Turan, grade twelve, was chosen as our winner of the close level for the Voice of Democracy competition. And Patrick Zaleski, grade sixty, Anacost student, as the winner of the VFW Close to One Hundred and Three, in advance of the district regional level competition. So we'll wait to hear how this admission works, competes against those other three in the district. I want to thank Commissioner Scarpelli. If you haven't noticed, there are those little, almost birdhouse-looking contraptions outside our elementary schools. They are the free little libraries. It's a national movement to kind of sponsor reading. If not a place to, just to deposit your leftover books after you read them, it's take a book and leave a book, not just leave your books. But the idea is that we're promoting literacy and reading across the community. They have them in my community, actually very popular. And so if you have some, some books that you would love and want to share with people, they're out there, and we really hope that people make use of them. So again, thanks for the grant that made that possible, as well as Commissioners Scarpelli and the Public Works who helped us put them in, as well as our elementary school principals. I think we're responsible for painting them, that practice is a role.
I didn't paint them.
Having someone paint them.
Actually, our student council did.
Oh, fantastic. That's great. Wow, we have more people. Very excited to announce that the project adventure equipment at the high school was installed. It's there, and kids are already making comments about it, which is fantastic. Again, project adventure will actually begin at the high school third marking period. We'll be having training for our health and physical education staff at the high school level during midterms, so we're not wasting any gym time. It would be interesting, as you said, I think Mr. Sposato was going to be the first one to shout this way, correct?
Yes.
Just to review again, parent academies. Last Tuesday, we had our secondary park. Tomorrow, seven o'clock, at the high school room one hundred, we are having our elementary park presentation on individual data, broken data more specifically than the general presentation tonight. We will talk about building performance and the rest. Looking forward to having people out there. As well as next week, our parent academy on elementary report cards, December second, six thirty, in high school room one hundred again. Try and encourage, if nothing else, specific representation from the five PTOs to be present. We will, full presentation, breaking down the new report cards, and more specifically, what the parent teacher conference will look like, so parents can go and prepare. We only have fifteen minutes, so the more prepared we are, both sides, the more effective we'll be for kids. Looking forward to taking questions and having a good conversation that evening. Two different collaborations with local law enforcement. First is within our driver's ed program. Detective Padilla had an interesting conversation or conversations with our students about a number of issues that pop up for new drivers, including Kyle's law, graduate driver license restrictions, learning distractions, and my all-time favorite, road rage. It's a wonderful conversation with our high school kids. Other needs, we had one of our Nutley police officers kicking off what we call LEAD, making better decisions about education, character education. And it involves our law enforcement here in Nutley, connecting with our health instruction, Mrs. Powell, as well as our elementary principals, and coming in and working during one health period a month with each of the sixth grade classes. We've assigned, in collaboration with the NPD, one officer per building, so they can build a specific relationship with the kids against, so that kids are seeing police officers as people that they can talk to, they're there to help, they're not just there when you get in trouble. They're following the LEAD curriculum, which is sponsored by the entire state. The mayor, the chief of police, a number of media detectives and the rest were all present. And the officer who ran the class for the sixth graders said to us after the fact that he would much rather have to arrest someone than teach at an elementary school. So it was, it was interesting. He said he said, by the way, I'm armed. So I think he had a new appreciation for everything that we do every day. Instant Decision Day coming up, December third, always a big day. We've worked out parking, which was always going to run, but our representatives from eleven different colleges and universities are meeting with our students, offer onsite admissions decisions. We always have a huge turnout with kids walking out that day, knowing exactly what plans can be after June. So looking forward to seeing our guidance department. Strategic planning update, just again, all of our action teams at this point are moving forward. Check the website for updates, and please, please, please get involved. And just some important upcoming dates, we talked about the park academy, parent academy for report cards, Instant Decision Day, parent teacher conferences at the elementary schools December eighth and tenth. And as always, we're continuing our assessment program with the SAT, the ASVAP, and the ACT happening in December. It's just bizarre. Thank you. Board's secretary, you're in.
I just have two quick things. One is to mention that the auditors have finished their onsite review, and they are currently working on finalizing all of the reports for presentation to the district. We also have a bid opening for the high school security entrance coming up on December fourth, two thousand and fifteen, and on behalf of the business office, I'd just like to extend and happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to deviate a little bit from our schedule, so right now, we're going to first hearing. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on holding resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Court Regulation six oh one, allow twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try to stay within requirement. Speakers may speak where they want, so only after others wish them to speak on topics that have been heard. All statements will be directed to be as chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too blunt, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Signing this conclusion before you take the mic. The first person, please step forward, if you'd like to speak. Resolution, I have a zone. Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go start from the back. Personnel resolution number one. Debbie, has that resolution?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move personnel resolution number one as listed. I so moved.
Sam?
Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Ladd. Mr. Canale, in a couple days' time, it's your birthday. Turned twenty-one. Congratulations. We did want to thank you for your service to the public schools, and the high schools specifically. It's been an enjoyable time working with you. I think you've done a great deal for our students on a daily basis, and a great deal for our program while you've been here. Wish all the best and stay in touch.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton. Yes, Mr. Philera.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Susa.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Sposato.
Yes.
You can turn your idea in the way out.
Okay, number two, Eliza.
I'm working with the board, the acting of the board, acting this year. Went through a rigorous process, four different rounds at the high school, meeting with multiple panels, and eventually meeting with Dr. Bollinger and myself. We recommended her wholeheartedly. I spoke with her superintendent, who had nothing but fine things to say about her and mad, nice things to say about me for taking her. But we're glad that she's decided to join us and recommend her without reservations.
Okay, I'll, on that resolution. It's in main personnel. Also, we'll recommend. Okay. If you want to express yourself.
After the vote, I want to see you approve of that. Those did hold up?
Congratulations.
Okay, we'll give us a chance to vacate, has some business we have to take care of. And we will continue on with the academics. Lisa, do you want to, president, you want to turn this?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to add that the resolution is one of your previous presidents.
Second, please.
Second.
Any questions?
I just would like to note that under number two, where it lists to me is attending workshop that was canceled, it should have been pulled, so that should not be. It's the fourth page.
Okay, we're going to move on to that.
It was canceled, but it still showed up here, I don't want to get it.
Okay, anything else to discuss, not Madeline?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro?
Yes. Admin Resolution Number Five, Mr. Scoleri.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move, administration resolution, we'll put five as written.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madeline?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro?
Yes. Finance Resolution Number Seventeen.
Yes, Mr. President, I make a motion to, yes, questions one through seventeen is ready.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on any?
Yes, I'd like to discuss the approval renewal of the insurance mandate in the second IMAP, that's for medical and financial insurance, to your broker or a market. We have an appointment, obviously, in 2013, specifically ending in 2013, why are we appointing them now, because we were supposed to appoint them in June for 2015, and we never appointed anyone in 2014, so where do you have commission money of $110,000 of that?
Any one answer those questions, please?
As far as appointing them for the current year, it was just an oversight on my part, they used to be approved as professional services, as the state changed the ruling that they are not considered a professional service, and we forgot to add an additional resolution to reappoint them. All the commission money that is due to the broker is paid directly through our insurance premiums from, by Horizon to the broker, so they have been paid to them for their services, but they did provide the services during those terms.
But for 2014, the board does not afford the opportunity to discuss or comment or vote on a broker, so how could that broker get commission we never appointed them?
Because it's not a commission check that is written directly from the district, it's an agreement that is done with Horizon.
Okay.
So when we saw, when I signed the renewal, and we approved the renewal, it's right in that renewal that that money is part of the renewal process.
Okay, well, we never appointed them.
No, but you approved the renewal documents, and it was in the renewal document. So you didn't do a resolution specifically stating IMAP, but you did approve a commission being paid to your broker.
Okay, and are we going to go out for bid?
For that, for that, for an insurance broker? That's a decision for the board to make as a whole.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, Madeline?
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes, except number sixteen, no.
Mr. Ferara?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Spazaro?
Yes. Okay, now we'll go back to our reports, so we'll start with committee reports, admin, Debbie?
Yes, Mr. President, the admin, and he met on November 17th, at that time, the superintendent updated us on continuing legal matters, we reviewed recommendations for employment, job descriptions, academic calendar, as well as policy and regulation updates, which are reflected in tonight's agenda, our next meeting is on December 15th.
Thank you. Lisa, Debbie's?
Yes, the academic meeting met on November 17th, the chairmakers discussed the surplus from the 2014-15 school year, she also discussed the proposed job descriptions organization of maintenance, aid and assistance, Mr. Administrator, Mr. Levine shared the results of the career in technical education program review, Mr. Retiria shared the results of the 2015-16 language survey, supplied to the students and parents, and also the parent survey regarding the curriculum and communication. Dr. Bellani reviewed the school calendar and also the middle school and high school program studies, Mr. Kozinski shared updates to the policy changes, and Dr. Bellani reviewed the upcoming state and overnight lectures. Thank you.
Thank you. Sal, finance?
Yes, Mr. President, finance committee met on November 15th, committee reviewed policy revisions in preparation of the next meeting, Mr. Nicolup provided a follow-up report on all the summer work, we also discussed a active gym ceiling repair and the acoustical tile work, and the upcoming bid for the high school entrance, the Lincoln School ramp, blue dry carpet and maintenance work orders for the month of October. The committee then began discussing a list of new projects for this next summer. Mrs. Shamen reviewed the November 23 finance resolutions, the chairman's also provided an update on the annual audit, and it's our understanding that the follow-up report is expected sometime in December. The committee began discussing the 2016 and 17 budget, the chairman's also reported on leads for a records management system throughout the district, and her offices are in the process of going out to interview other school districts to see what they're doing, and what vendors are out there, and what's available for us. The committee also discussed a proposed 2016 and 17 academic calendar, the Affordable Care Act, IRS reporting requirements, the KPMG pension audit, and the extended day financials.
Thank you, Mr. Ferara. Okay, here we go, citizens, in this section, we allow questions and comments on old school related matters, our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications, again, that each person shall be limited to three minutes, we ask you to try to stay within requirement, as stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, always state your name and address, and please sign out and miss the conclusion. Anyone willing to want to speak, please come to the mic.
Hello, my name is Jamie, thank you so much for letting me on this today, I'm going to talk about an issue that is very near and dear to my heart, and I hope that I'm going to start a conversation that needs to be started. On Thursday, November 17th, 2011, one of Nutley's most beloved students, Danielle Orna, passed away. Four years later, we as a community still refuse to start the conversation about mental illness. Each year, even before I was a Nutley High School student, the Gay Street Alliance would hold a candlelight vigil on the third Tuesday of every November. This year, the night of the vigil fell on the four-year anniversary of Danielle's death, and the Nutley High administration not only had the vigil rescheduled for another night, but the inconsiderate approach to the issue scared the students away from even so much of mentioning Danielle's name during the event. The fear of the school is that honoring her would glorify what happened to her. Even beyond this act of the administration being disrespectful to Danielle and her loved ones, it is lacking compassion for every single person in this school, this town, and this world who suffers from mental illness. According to mentalhealth.gov, more than half of mental illness cases go undiagnosed in teens every year, approximately 20% of teens will experience depression before they reach adulthood, and inevitably, depression increases a teen's risk for attempting suicide by 12 times. There is a stigma attached to mental disorders and the struggles that people suffer through every day. We need to bring mental illness and suicide prevention education into our school systems, and we need both students and staff to be fully educated in the identifiers, signs, risks, and responses to students in distress. The moment we silence ourselves in this discussion of mental illness is the moment we silence the people who are crying for help. Danielle was the president of the Gay Street Alliance, she was motivated and passionate, she impacted every single life she touched. To honor her at the annual candlelight vigil is not only necessary, but it is crucial to the ongoing healing process of the world stuck behind. It is detrimental in its importance of showing others who may be struggling with thoughts of self-injury, the everlasting effects of a loss like that. Since the day I lost Danielle, I have never been the same, but that is why I'm standing here today, that is why I have overcome my own issues with depression, self-harm, and suicidal thoughts, that is why I am not afraid to say her name, to talk about what she went through. It is so offensive to say that we are glorifying her death, especially as a group of people who mourn that loss every day of our lives. We want to honor her memory and the amazing things she contributed to our lives, our school, and our community. We want to show others who find themselves in a similar place that it is okay to speak up, to ask for help, and to tell their stories, and they should be able to seek that help in a school where the administration is not afraid of the words suicide or depression. In the last month of my junior year at Nutley High, Principal Williams and Vice Principals Mr. Canella and Mr. Francia sat my class down and said, you are seniors now, the top dogs, you rule the school, and you need to start thinking about the legacy you want to leave behind. This is my legacy, I need to know that when I graduate, my town, my community, my school, my peers, and my home will be okay, will no longer feel silenced, and will have their voices heard. I am in close contact with a local mental health facility that provides services to schools, I have personally attended mental illness awareness workshops specifically designed for the school administration and faculty members. We need to bring assemblies and speakers, professionals, and survivors to reach the students in distress. There's a conversation that needs to be had, one that is long overdue, and it needs to be started today. People like Danielle Orna need to be remembered, not hidden, the Nutley school system needs to learn from its mistakes and not mask them. Suicide and mental health awareness and prevention must be taught to the administration and staff, as well as brought to the student body, because people like me, who have been lucky enough to survive despite their struggles, are tired of staying silent, and I think it's time that we all stop staying silent, too.
Okay, the board will definitely take that into a discussion, you got my word on that, and we'll see what we can do without you, all right? Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that quarter of the meeting and hold business.
Are you afraid to look at Freddie and his?
So, one thing, I talked about the mural project before, the Christmas tree lighting that you made here on the 29th, that front, mural project, the murals being displayed that have been drawn up by our students here in the district, you'll get to review them and vote on them, a final one will then actually be placed on the canvas, and this hasn't been done for over 40 or 50 years, and Nutley has some very famous artists, because through some of the canvassing schools, but then that will actually be installed in one of our schools as a permanent piece of art, so please, if you come to the mayor's tree legging, please reach out, and I'll just cover the last one, the Hall of Fame this past week, and I also just want to recognize our culinary arts program, they did all the food, it was a tremendous job, if you haven't been to anything that our students do, you would think you're being catered by the finest culinary arts staff, so they do a great job here, each one of them has the most.
Thanks, Freddie. Anyone else for hold business? And the new business?
Last week, I was a part of the first annual council advisory committee, it's about 30 staff, parents, students, as well as stakeholders in the community to bring awareness, actually ironically, to some of the things that Jamie spoke about, in an effort to bring things pertaining to students' mental health, so that was the first conversation that we had, and subsequent conversations and surveys and things will be, in subcommitments will be coming through this, it was a good step in regards to enhancing awareness about the student world.
Okay, thank you. Guess on another note, we'd like to congratulate our Nutley football team, a great season.
We should also add an issue to the football team, also the band and cheerleaders.
Okay, with that point, we are not going to executive tonight, so we are going to adjourn right from here, make a motion for a term.
Come on.
Okay, thank you.